The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody, both in the hearing room and whoever can tear themselves away from elections in order to follow us on the live stream. This is the final day of Public Hearing 23 of the Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. And as you know, we have been looking in particular at Aford's operation. We commence by acknowledging the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians of the land upon which this hearing is taking place and upon which the commissioners are participating in the hearing. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. And we also pay our respects to all First Nations people who may be in the hearing room or who are following the proceedings on the live stream. Yes, Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Mr. Allen and Ms. Tui.
Good morning.
Mr. Allen, I cheekily gave you some homework to do last night by way of asking you, would you read Hearing Bundle E, Tabs 32 to 56? Have you been able to do that?
Yes, I did.
That transfer of evidence relates to CEO reports from Stephen Harrell to the board during his tenure as the CEO. And I think in total, there are some 25 reports running from January 2019 to March 2021. Is that correct?
Yes.
What were your impressions of a general nature when you had a chance to revisit those reports? In terms of, were they adequate with the benefit of hindsight for the role the board had to play?
I think they were reasonably adequate, but there was certainly, as you'd indicated in your earlier question yesterday, an over focus on financial matters.
Why do you think that was the case?
The then CEO had a very strong view that financial performance also reflected other performance more broadly across the organisation.
Were you concerned about the tone of some of those reports and the personalisation of the reporting by Mr. Harrell?
Yes, and that was a matter that I did take up with the then CEO on a number of occasions.
What did you identify as the issue you took up with him?
The nature of some of the comments were at times personal, at times I felt inappropriate and not required in such a CEO's board report.
Because you accept, I take it, Mr. Allen, that he was effectively reporting on behalf of the organisation to the board?
Yes.
And yet, on numerous occasions in those reports, they seem somewhat self-centered in the way information is expressed and commentary that goes with it.
Yes.
Chair, I will deal with that issue in written submissions in more detail. I don't intend to take commissioners through those reports. Can I ask you to contrast those reports with a report from your current CEO? What difference has it any of you noticed between Mr. Harrell's reports and the reports of Ms. Tui to the board?
Ms. Tui's reports are far more effective in terms of informing the board on a range of matters and are much more client, more directly client focused.
Can I ask if Hearing Bundle E, Tab 51, be brought up? Which is Stephen Harrell's report of October 2020 to the board?
Do we need to give a reference number for that?
It's now on screen. Can you see, Mr. Allen, from that report that it starts on page one referring to a very strong first quarter?
Yes.
And you quote, "The result for the month is once again fabulous," unquote.
Yes.
Unusual language in a CEO report, isn't it?
Yes.
Goes on to say, "Total profit for the quarter is off the charts due to the net benefit of Jobkeeper over the quarter of $6.9 million," unquote. Can you see that?
Yes, I can.
How much Jobkeeper assistance did Aford receive during the pandemic?
My recollection, it was in the vicinity of $6 million. I can't recall more specifically, but we can certainly take that as a question on notice.
Thank you.
I think the 2020, 2021 financial report indicates $10 million during that year.
Thank you, Chair.
By your legal representatives, would you come back to the commission with details of what payments were received during that period of time?
Absolutely.
Isn't there a section in his report on page three in part refocusing on the Aford Way with a bullet point listed with emphasis on lack of company events, et cetera? There doesn't seem to be any reference or mention to clients.
No, there's not.
Includes a final point, "I have been off the boil this year, so my performance has been mediocre," unquote. You know what Mr. Harrell was referring to when he made that surprising admission?
Mr. Harrell had some difficult family matters during that period.
And then on page seven of that report, when referring to training, he says, and I quote, "We've always led the sector by a long way, but now we are quite simply in another universe," unquote.
Yes.
Is that narcissism gone mad?
I think that's the conclusion many people would reach after reading that, yes.
Would you reach that conclusion, having reread it?
I reached that conclusion at the time I read it initially.
And why was that expression I've just quoted inappropriate in your mind from a CEO?
Because essentially, it was about the CEO and not the organisation nor its clients.
And it tells the board nothing about but qualitative basis for asserting where Aford was vis-à-vis other organisations in terms of delivering training. That's correct, isn't it?
That's correct, yes.
It's a boast.
Yes.
And in those sense, how could that assist the board in assessing how Aford was performing in respect to its training?
It doesn't.
Was that matter raised with Mr. Harrell at any point? The fact that there appeared to be, on my assessment, a relative paucity of information about the substance of what training was being provided and at what level it was achieving its ends?
Yes, it was raised with the then CEO. But as I mentioned in my evidence yesterday, there was also a Volume Two set of board papers that provided much more detailed information on training and development activities, the number of hours of training, the range of programmes, et cetera. And that was available to the board.
Can I invite you once again, as an organisation, to identify that material and provide it to the commission? If it already hasn't been provided?
I believe it has been provided, but we will check. Thank you.
In that case, perhaps if your legal representatives could identify particular documents that they say fit the description you've just described?
Yes.
Can I now have the reporter join Tui to the board of December 2021, which appears at Hearing Bundle E, Tab 66, brought up? The reference is af.0005.001.2060. Just take a moment to look at that, if you could, Mr. Allen.
So I'm just waiting for the larger version. Thank you. Yes.
That starts with a COVID-19 response. It then deals with the question of vaccinations and the vaccination policy. And then finance by referring to the finance report. Can you see that?
Yes.
And on page two, it continues with matters such as Myrna Apron, the MDIS, commission reportable incidents, the death of a resident in Queensland, page three, and also on page three, the ANSPAR risk audit. So, John, without going into any details, can I assume that the board will regard that as a much more helpful report in terms of its content and scope?
Yes.
I'll ask you some questions, if I can, about a document known as the Aford Way. Are you familiar with that document?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin, have you finished taking Mr. Allen through the papers presented by the CEO?
Yes.
I wonder if I just might ask a question that may be that other commissioners have got a question also to ask about it. If you could go, or if we could bring up the report of April 2019, which is E36, the reference is af.0005.001.1843. Mr. Allen, you see the top five. The first is the tragedy at Woodbine.
Yes.
Which is the reference to the death of a participant about which we have heard. There is one paragraph that reports that there was a tragedy and advises that our insurance brokers had been notified. And then it says counselling services have been offered to the client's family, staff and other clients. Counselors visited our site and quite a few access port by phone. What was the response of the board to this information conveyed in this way?
The board just obviously discussed the situation and the dreadful tragedy that had occurred. There was other email advice provided from the then CEO to the board at different times from the day that the tragedy occurred.
Do you consider those two paragraphs to which I have referred as an appropriate way for the CEO to have informed the board about the tragedy that had occurred?
The board had already been informed about the tragedy and the CEO's comments are a summary of some of the activities and responses that had been put in place. Do I find it a particularly sensitive wording of such a tragic matter? No, I don't.
No, indeed. Now, if we could please have from E37, Tab 37, the document is af.0005.001.1850. This is the CEO's report for July 2019. You see that apart from matters for approval, the second item is significant issues. Top five, next heading, "All in all, a very good year." Do we see in there, in the very good year, any reference to the death of a participant?
No, we don't.
It's fairly astonishing thing to say, isn't it, for a CEO in the light of a tragedy of the kind that had been reported at the very, at the previous meeting?
Yes, it is, Chair.
Was that pointed out at the time by the board or any member there on?
I don't recall specific comments of any of the board members at the time in relation to this particular matter, but certainly there were discussions with the CEO about the tone and nature of some of his reporting.
Yes, I see. I might just pause and ask if either of the commissioners have any questions about this series of documents? All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Allen, I was asking you about a document called The Aford Way.
Yes.
If one looks at the annual report of Aford of 2018, 19, which is af.001.001.0652, Tab 126 in Hearing Bundle E. Can we just bring up page 72 of that report? Which is 0652 in the document? If one looks at the second last paragraph on that page, you'll see it says, "The Aford Way is a mindset. It is unique to Aford and one that nurtures strong teams and tribes throughout the 2,000 strong permanent, part-time, casual and supported employees that make up our community." Were you, whilst a member of the board, involved in the development of The Aford Way?
The board wasn't involved in the development of The Aford Way. It was certainly a matter of some discussion between the board and the CEO. And the board directed the CEO to rewrite that document on a number of occasions.
Let me take you through what I understand the history to be. Can we have Hearing Bundle E, Tab 32? At page 1795, which is the CEO report to the board for January 2019. That document refers to various problems with staff and to, and I quote, "A culture," I'm quote, "document." Did you understand that to be the first draft of The Aford Way in January 2019? Or did it exist prior to that?
I believe that was the first iteration of that document, yes.
And this suggests that this culture document, as it's described, emanated from the strategic plan of 2018 to 2021. Was that your recollection?
Yes, culture was a very important part of the discussions at that strategic planning session.
And so there's every reason to believe that it may have been associated with following through the strategic plan.
Yes.
There was then a strategic planning weekend in March 2019 on the Gold Coast. You were listed as one of the speakers at that planning weekend. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And there appears to be a draft of the culture document at Hearing Bundle E, Tab 86, which has a whole section dealing with the question of culture. I might go to that, but that seems to be a further iteration of this document. Perhaps I might bring up page 321, Hearing Bundle E, Tab 86. The document reference is 01.3188. And at 321. Up to the next page. You can see the heading, "Culture is Key." Just take a moment, if you could, to read that document.
Yes.
Would you agree that that appears to be written in terms that would cause concerns to the board? Are you quite content with that wording?
There's a strong focus on our clients and client outcomes, so you're some reasonably content with that wording.
And then later in a CEO report to the board for July 2019, which is Hearing Bundle E, Tab 37, it says at 1851. And whilst that's coming up, just let me read the extract that I want to take you to. It says, "It is very important that senior execs live the, quote unquote, 'Aford Way.' As if we don't, a big gap between the management and the frontline emerges. When this happens, gossip starts to become rampant, discipline slip, staff turnover increases and silly incidents increase. Unfortunately, this has been also seen some under-recording of incidents as, quote, 'sweeping under the carpet,' unquote, and protecting mates starts to occur. It will take six months to truly get back to where we were. And while we are still on par with our higher performing competitors like House, with no steps, Sunnyfield, Sylven Vale, DSA, et cetera, I am not happy." Can you recall the board considering that CEO report?
Yes.
Do you agree with the sentiment expressed by Mr. Harrell? That it's important that senior executives live the Aford Way?
I certainly agree with the view that all staff across the organisation, regardless of their position or their level in the organisation, should subscribe to this own positive culture.
And when he says, "We'll take six months to truly get back to where we were," what had happened? Put the organisation in a place that Mr. Harrell was not happy with?
I can't recall any specific instance that would have led to him expressing that view, but just a general view from him as he records.
Then in a CEO report to the board for September 2019, at Hearing Bundle E, Tab 39, Mr. Harrell makes repeated references to The Aford Way and seems to blame the former CFO for problems. And also makes reference to his own integrity. Can you, I have up on screen, af.005.001.1865.
I think Mr. Allen has read.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Do you have any concerns about the reporting contained in that report?
Yes.
What were those concerns?
The concerns were what appeared to be, at that time, a relatively consistent favour being self-congratulatory in the nature of the then CEO's comments. But also concerns about his relationship with the then CFO. And disparaging comments about other providers that I didn't consider were appropriate.
These are comments indicative of a dysfunctional organisation, aren't they?
I'm, no, Chair, I wouldn't agree with that.
You wouldn't agree?
Not a dysfunctional organisation, but certainly some dysfunctional elements in the then CEO's behaviour.
This is a CEO who is accusing people within his organisation of effectively undermining him and threatening to get, "There's a cancer that sent our allied health into losses. They must be removed or healed." Is the language of an organisation that is functioning reasonably well?
It's the language of the CEO.
Precisely. Isn't it part of the function of the board to be sceptical about what the board is told by management? And at least to make inquiries when put on notice that things are not going well?
Yes.
Did that happen on this occasion in August 2019 in the light of the report?
Yes, it did.
How?
The board asked for further information in regard to allied health services. And I understand that then Chair took up the matter of the then CEO's interpersonal relationship. the then CEO's interpersonal relationships with the C then CFO.
Was that interaction recorded in a report subsequently to the board?
Not that I recall, Chair.
No. Yes, Mr. Griffin, sorry to interrupt you again.
In a CEO's report of August two thousand and nineteen, which is A W F dot triple zero five dot triple zero one dot one eight six eight. Didn't come up, but there's a heading at point five integrity and respect. And Mr. Harold discusses those issues and he says in part, in my career, there's always been an absolute given. Stephen Harold has impeccable integrity. Is it just me or do you become concerned when people speak of themselves in the third person?
I don't think it's just you, Mr. Griffin, no.
Does that ring alarm bells for you?
It certainly caused me concern, yes.
Are you able to recollect why Mr. Harold felt the need to put language of that nature in his report to the board?
At that time, and I believe this is what led to the comments. The then chair took up the issue of credit card reconciliations with the then CEO.
Is that a polite way of saying there was concern about his spending on the credit card?
Yes, there was concern about the transparency of and the acquittal of credit cards in a timely way.
Was there concern about whether there was expenditure expenditure that had been properly authorised?
The concern was that the proper authorisation wasn't more transparent.
I think you alluded a few moments ago to concerns about his relationship with other staff members, particularly senior executive members. Is that correct?
Yes.
What was the nature of your or the board's concerns about Mr. Harold's relationship with senior colleagues?
The nature of the concern was that the organisation had had a number of CFOs over a relatively short period and the board was concerned to better understand what was causing that situation. It wasn't a general concern at that time with in relationships with other executives, which seemed to be from the board's observation generally good.
Did the board generally or the then chair speak to the other people involved on a one to one basis?
I believe the then chair did, yes.
And do you know what was the result of those discussions?
I don't recall specifically the CFO, the then CFO took a decision to leave the organisation and there were further discussions about what position should be introduced to replace the CFO.
In the CEO report to the board for December two thousand and nineteen behind hearing bundle at tab forty two. I don't need this to be brought up at page one nine one four. As Harold has quoted as saying, two thousand and nineteen was also saw the beginning of our national staff ball and awards. That will be central part of the celebration of the afford way and being an affordian. Does that raise any red flags? Or is that just colourful language?
I think it's just colourful language.
He goes on at one nine one five to say, we are the fastest growing company in the sector in Australia, thanks to the afford way. As a matter of fact, was that correct to your knowledge?
No.
You mean it wasn't correct? We don't know whether it was or not.
It wasn't correct.
And in what way wasn't it correct?
The efforts of staff had led to the expansion of the organisation's services and facilities. A culture document doesn't of itself drive that performance.
So it might be the case that on a financial analysis, afford may have been the fastest growing company in the sector, but certainly not for the reason described by Mr. Harold.
No, that's right. There are a range of reasons for the organisation's grant.
That suggests to occasional onlooker that Mr. Harold was seeking to claim credit for everything because he was the primary author of the afford way and everything flowed from that. Is that a fair assessment?
I think that's quite a reasonable assumption, yes.
There's a copy of the afford way adhering bundle E tab two, five, two dated May two thousand and twenty. That second be brought up.
Absolutely, give the reference.
A W F point triple zero four point triple zero one point one, sorry, point zero double one three. As indicated, Mr. Allen, what's on the screen is dated May two thousand and twenty. As a preliminary question, can I ask you this? Do you know when and if the afford way was formally adopted by the board? The reason I ask that is we haven't been able to ascertain a specific resolution, even though it's gone before the board on many occasions in different iterations.
I can't recall whether it was formally adopted by the board, but certainly the board had a number of discussions with the then CEO about the document and as I've indicated in one of my earlier responses, a number of revisions were requested.
And with that request for revisions met by Mr. Harold?
I believe so, yes. No, not I believe so, yes.
And did we finally come to a document like the one on screen? Does does that represent what I might call the final version of that document? Are we unable to tell?
I I believe that's the final version, yes.
So to your knowledge, this commission can work on the basis that the document that I just had put up on screen was the working document within the organisation.
Yes.
Then finally in respect of CEO reports, can I take you to the report of October two thousand and twenty? Hearing bundle lead tab fifty one at page one double nine two. Document reference A W F point triple zero five point triple zero one point one double nine zero. There's a quote on that page which says, two thousand and twenty has been a difficult year and our culture has remained very strong, but needs some refocusing. The backbone of our incredible success over the past five years has been the afford way. You see that?
Yes, I can.
I take it from your earlier answer that you don't accept that proposition because you point out that the backbone of the excessive afford was the hard work and dedication of your mini staff.
That's correct.
In any board, any board meeting you can recall, was Mr. Harold challenged about this constant theme of attributing to his manifesto the afford way? Everything positive that happened that afford?
Yes, that was taken up with the then CEO on a number of occasions at board meetings.
Can you give the commissioners some flavour as to how it was taken up and how he responded?
It was taken up in a number of ways, particularly as I mentioned in an earlier response, the nature and tone of the language that was being used and the nature of the self congratulatory comments and the lack of recognition of the contribution of staff more broadly across the organisation.
But from this brief survey, it doesn't seem to be any fundamental change in his approach or attitude.
I do believe some change took place, but it's fair to say there was no sustained change. The changes didn't necessarily last very long.
Doesn't that represent a challenge to the authority of the board?
That you've given. It certainly represents a level of concern for the board and the board took that concern up with the then CEO.
But it's more than concern, isn't it? On your evidence, he's been told on a number of occasions that the board wasn't happy with how these reports were being presented. And he appears to thumb his nose at the board.
That's certainly one interpretation. But there were active discussions with the then CEO about a range of those matters.
Can I finally take you to the annual report of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty of Ford? Hearing bundle E tab one, two, seven at page double zero three nine. D R C double nine double nine point zero one double two point triple zero one. Can I ask that? I have the preceding page as well. It's three eight. Thank you. Now that's in the annual report, can I assume that the annual report was signed off by the board before it was publicly released?
Yes, it was. And this then CEO was directed to remove the photo of himself in that annual report.
Directed before the report was released or?
Before the report was released is my clear recollection. I'm not sure what version you've got all. But certainly that took place and I did see a version without that photograph.
My instructions, Mr. Allen, are that what's up on the screen is what appears on the website of the Ford of the annual report. If that be correct, would that surprise you?
Yes, it would.
Why did the board think the photograph at page thirty nine should be removed? And before you answer that, that appears to be a montage of photos in the background, presumably of activities of forwarding participants with hidden shoulders shot of Mr. Harold superimposed on top of that montage. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, although I'm not familiar with the technique.
When that was presented to the board, what was the nature of the objection of any board members to that photograph?
That it excessively focused on the CEO and was not consistent with what the board felt was an appropriate annual report.
This question is not based on a psychological or psychiatric diagnosis. Just to your mind, it's presenting a photograph like that for publication in an annual report that be appear to you to be engaging in narcissistic behaviour.
Yes, that's a reasonable assumption. However, in fairness, this then CEO said he didn't direct it, that be included. The staff responsible for preparing the annual report had included it of their own volition.
But surely when it went before the board, he had seen it in the board papers when they've been compiled.
I presume so, yes.
Were you persuaded by his explanation that it wasn't me, it was someone else?
The board wasn't concerned about how the photograph arrived in the annual report. The board was concerned that it was inappropriate in the annual report and directed that it be removed.
It would be even worse if staff thought this was an appropriate thing to put into an annual report. It would tell you an awful lot about the relationship between the CEO and the staff, wouldn't it? They thought this is, this was the way to go.
It would have been one or two individuals in fairness, Chair, working on the annual report, not reflective of the views of staff more broadly.
Griffin, I have a few questions for Mr. Allen about the strategic planning weekend. Could I just go back to that document that we had, bundle E eighty six? And if we could bring that up again, that would be good, first page. Yes, so the, yes, the bundle E eighty six and the number is, I'm only going from the bundle, but yes, I F F dot O O one one dot O O O one dot three one eight eight. It's the first page. Yes. So from the agenda, I note, and I'm not going to read out the name, but I note that board members had an opportunity to arrive at and tour a group home. Do you know if permission was sought and granted from the resident to have board members come into their home?
Yes, that was always a requirement of the board. There were, the best of my recollection is that there were no residents at the group home at that time and the board also visited a day programme and permission was received from the participants in that programme and or their families and carers about the board's visit.
So I understand you correctly. So you visited that group home, no resident, resident were there at the time?
That's correct.
So they were asked to leave but for the specific purpose for board members to come in and have a look at their home?
No, absolutely not. The the residents at the home were out at day activities or the employment that they were pursuing.
Do you know if they knew that board members were going to come into their home?
The best of my recollection is, yes, they were made aware, they were told in advance that the board would be coming to visit that home.
If you could confirm that, perhaps, you know, if you want to take that on notice, I'd be interested to know that.
Yes, yes, I'm happy to check. I'm not sure what records there would be, but I will absolutely ensure we check.
Thank you. And one final question about the agenda. On the Saturday, you've got, which is on the next page, and you have a programme to discuss markets and investments, et cetera. Were disabled people part of that conversation? Did board members hear directly from disabled people as part of those discussions?
I don't recall that there was anyone with a disability in the executive team at that time. There was subsequently, but certainly the interests of our clients were discussed and and were represented by the senior team.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Allen, just returning back to Mr. Harold. Do you accept the proposition that it appears that his primary objective was to promote himself at the expense of other members working within the organisation?
I don't think it's fair to say that was his primary objective. He regularly provided positive feedback and you I don't think it's fair to say that was his primary objective. Um, he regularly provided uh positive feedback and you will have seen from reading the board reports uh that he did uh mention that positive performance of staff generally and of his senior team from time to time.
Would you agree with the proposition that the afford way would have been more accurately characterised as the Stephen Harold way?
One could easily form that view, but I don't necessarily think that it is fair to completely characterise that document in that way.
Why is it unfair?
It wasn't all about the then CEO.
Ms Tui, you've heard the questions and answers. Given your extensive experience as a CEO before joining a Ford, have you been sitting on the board of a Ford and seen this sort of documentation come forward over that two year period? What would your reaction have been?
Can I just confirm? Are we talking about the afford why document?
Yes, and the reporting by Mr Harold to the board in the way we described this morning.
The the board reporting in terms of tone and some of the content uh might believe is that it was inappropriate. Um, it certainly wasn't the level of professional reporting that should be going uh to a board. There was a heavy emphasis on financial matters. And even though volume two provides a lot of client um participant content, I think the quality of the outcomes that the organisation was achieving and meeting its compliance obligations, for example, were matters that should have been discussed in the CEO's report. Uh, in relation to the afford why document, um, I'm not a fan of culture documents. I don't think documents um make a culture live and breathe and I place great emphasis on our values, our code of conduct, our purpose, and how that's brought to life in the organisation, because that then goes to how we work and how we engage with our participants and families.
I'm very conscious that you sit next to the current chair of your board. But given the fact that Mr Allen was not the chair of the board at the time, and I think his evidence is to the effect that he believes the chair is back to Mr Harold, had you been sitting on the board and you had concerns, how would you seek to address those concerns with a CEO?
If I was sitting on the board, um, I would either raise the concerns that I had with the full board uh and or the chair uh without the CEO being present. Uh, to ascertain whether any of the other directors also had uh concerns. Uh, if uh appropriate, I would then have a one-on-one conversation as well with the um CEO, but often I think it's more appropriate for the chair who the CEO generally reports to, to um, to do that. I probably would have wanted to see changes to the reporting that was certainly in the information that was going to the board. Probably would have, yeah, expected to see that actually occurred following the issues being raised.
Would you expect the content of the discussion between the chairperson and CEO to be recorded?
I would expect that it would be brought up in an in-camera session at the board meeting, yes.
Um, would that include a written summary of what had occurred, even though it may not be for publication elsewhere?
I've seen that before in board, in board minutes, yes. So the in-camera minutes can certainly be kept by the company secretary, can be kept confidential from the full executive.
And in your experience, has that been an effective way of dealing with these sorts of issues?
I think it gives you a, a record of performance matters.
And it enables you to record how the CEO responded. Firstly, correct?
Correct.
And secondly, to set some goals or milestones for behaviour change.
That's right.
Without that, there's a risk that'll simply roll on, isn't there?
Like any performance matter with any staff member, yes.
And as a matter of fairness to the CEO, it should be documented so both parties are clear as to where the situation is at a particular time.
Yes, that's great.
The advantage of that approach I suggest to you, Ms Tui, is that if the board decides to pull the trigger on the CEO, they have an audit trail of concerns, responses and failure to change.
That's right.
From a risk point of view, that's very effective for an organisation, isn't it?
It is.
Because you're less likely to get a claim from the CEO for wrongful dismissal or some other issue.
And I think that the CEO um should have the same procedural fairness as any staff member in the organisation. Yeah, yeah.
If Chris isn't having further questions on this issue, I propose to move Christian Bennett.
Mr Allen, do you feel in hindsight that aspects of Mr Harold's behaviour in the way he reported was um he was allowed to get away with it because he was delivering profit?
No, no, I don't. Um. The organisation was certainly successful in providing more services to more people in more places. Um, the organisation is, is a for-purpose organisation. In, in that regard, certainly, um, the then CEO made a very strong contribution to increasing the range of, of services um for our clients. But I don't think there was a trade-off from one of, a better expression um on the other areas um of his performance that had been raised with him as a concern.
The um CEO reports that we've gone through this morning, um, their primary focus has been on profits with very little commentary usually about quality or outcomes for people with disability. Um, was, was there um perhaps not formally given, but next that the board shared the focus on profits and expansion with the CEO?
Uh, the board certainly um had an expressed desire to grow the organisation and provide more services to more people in more places. Uh, it wasn't focused on, on profit per se, um, but on the expansion of services to benefit our clients, yes.
The word quality is missing from the answer you've just given, isn't it? You can provide more services, but they're not necessarily quality services, are they?
That's a fair comment, Chair, but I, I am.
I'm just commenting, I'm just commenting on the answer you gave.
Yes, thank you.
The coinciding of the growth because of the introduction of the NDIS um as a national policy was based on people with disability having individualised arrangements that looked at their aspirations and their goals. Um, and then what services could be provided in a range of ways to meet those aspirations. Neither in strategic plans nor in the reports to the board do I see an alignment of that goal of the introduction of the NDIS. What I read is about market competitors and I'm trying to understand how the board may have understood its growth of its business within actually what the goals for individuals under the NDIS.
The organisation's mission and vision speak to both of those points in terms of, of quality um and improved lifestyles and self-determination uh for our clients.
But how did the board reassure itself and give direction, which is the role of the board, to the CEO? On delivering that for people with disability?
That was broadly reflected um in the strategic plans. It, uh, in, in fairness, they were not detailed documents, but certainly the whole purpose uh and, and being of the organisation was to achieve uh those quality outcomes for our clients.
Didn't you in reality have models of delivery that you'd been doing through the fifties of housing, day programmes, the factory and just expand that old model?
Uh, no, uh, there were a range of, of newer services um that were provided to our clients. Allied Health um uh is a good example. That was not a service previously uh provided by a Ford historically. Um. There was also an increase in, in uh respite services, which had historically been part of the organisation, uh support coordination as well. Um, there was uh holiday programmes that hadn't historically been part of the organisation um where staff were involved in taking clients overseas to places like Disneyland, uh, for example. Uh, that wasn't part of the historical service mix of the organisation uh and club before that's been mentioned um at the hearing this week was a, another new and different service to provide uh more activities and more opportunities uh for clients on weekends. So there was a significant, significant increase in, in the range of services beyond what was traditionally provided. And a Ford traditionally didn't provide uh group homes, uh more involved in um to my understanding of the history of the organisation in large-scale residential centres. Uh, and they, there was only one remaining prior to the introduction of the NDIS and that was Cherrywood. Um, and uh the then Aging Disability and Home Care uh Department of New South Wales and a Ford jointly funded uh the construction of a number of group homes to relocate those residents from that large-scale residential centre.
Yes, um. Just a couple of questions from me. You've heard Ms Tui's very clear explanation, if I might say so, as to how the board might uh consider the adequacy of the performance of a CEO. Were there any in-camera meetings of the board of the kind that Ms Tui has described?
Uh, yes, there were.
When, when, when was the first one?
I'm sorry, Chair, I can't recall.
Was it after, was it after the report into this, and the CEO's alleged misconduct?
No, it was prior to that.
What was the outcome of that? If you can't remember, you can't remember.
I, I can't remember specifically. There were some changes in, in the then CEO's performance. There were um different um executive positions put in place to better support the organisation and the then CEO. Those types of things were the outcomes of those conversations.
This is something that I would put to Ms Tui for her response, except that she's sitting next to you, so I won't. But I do want to put to you and I recognise that we are looking at this with the benefit of hindsight and with the benefit of the evidence about what happened at the day programmes, not just to the three young men who experienced abuse, but more generally. I want to put to you my impression on reading the material that you read overnight. I find it difficult to understand how the CEO could possibly have lasted as long as he did in the light of the reporting that he did, which was not merely, I'm giving you my impression, narcissistic in the way that has been described by Mr Griffin, but reflected a complete failure to recognise, understand and implement as far as the documentation is concerned, the overriding goal of the organisation, not just to provide services or more of them, but to keep the health, wellbeing and safety of all the participants in the programme at the very forefront of the organisation. And as I look at those documents, some of which I have to say I would regard the comments of the CEO as bizarre, I cannot understand how he was allowed to continue as long as he did. I, I give you the chance to comment.
Chair, in fairness to the then CEO, the board had observed uh the CEO in his um relationship with our clients um at various functions and various events. Um, and it was clear that he was well-regarded and well-liked by our clients from those interactions. Uh, I observed them to be very genuine um on their, the part of our clients and on the part of our then CEO. But I take the points that you've made about the reports. And Ms Tui and I have a very open and strong working relationship. And I'm not uncomfortable for her to be asked and answered in the nature of the questions that the commission has raised today.
Yes, I'm not going to seek to embarrass Ms Tui. I, I've given you my impression of it and I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond. All right, if there's nothing else, do you have any questions?
Just one further question for me. Uh, you've both talked about, uh, you know, renewal and, you know, you're reviewing your operations and governance. So on Monday, we heard from the parent who had expectation when their adult child went to day programme that it would enable them to go out into the community and participate. So what plan do you have to make those programmes more inclusive? For example, in your statement, you say they're given a list of activities, activity that they can choose from. But what if they want to go to the local library instead of a bowling activity and participate in book clubs? Is that open? Do you have that in your? Is that the sort of plan you have?
It's, that's already available. It is already available, those sorts of activities. So it's often driven by um the desire of the participants in terms of what they want to do on a particular day. We do quite a lot of one-on-one community support um that comes from either our day programmes or directly from their home. Um, there is a full review going on at the moment around the contemporary nature of our practice across both our residential settings and our community settings uh as well.
So my final question on that point then is, so we heard from three families who are now have said their child, adult child is happier, less behavioural issue, communicating better. So that's three. Is there any impediment, Ms Tui, to then not enabling your six thousand, your current six thousand client to be able to do exactly that? Is there any impediment to that?
There's certainly no impediment for us actually meeting the individual um desires and wants and goals of a participant. In relation to whether or not a participant has uh one-on-one support, obviously for us, that's often dictated by the funding that's available for, for somebody. But, you know, things are never black and white and an organisation should always have an approach of trying to make things work as best as we possibly can. I was quite disturbed to hear that, in fact, the parents felt that their children had actually gone backwards when attending. Um, that concerned me greatly. That certainly should not be the case. And that's one of the reasons why the whole new team have been here all week is just to hear those concerns so that it feeds into the work that we're currently doing so that we can make sure we address it.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, Mr Griffin, um, if we adjourn now at eleven thirty, bearing in mind the vicissitudes of life, when do you think you'll be concluded?
I think I'll finish by one.
All right, we'll, we'll adjourn until a bit.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Griffin.
Misses, I now like to move to the topic of the board oversight of incidents involving violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation of participants. Ms Tuohy, do I understand that until October 2021. A Ford did not have a dedicated team focused on ensuring the safety and quality of services provided. To participants or preventing and responding to violence against them, et cetera.
There wasn't an independent team, no.
And in broad terms, was that responsibly responsibility insofar as it was discharged? The province of the HR department?
Uh, yes, it was, and also the roles that had responsibility for particular areas of service delivery.
You took the view, I take it, that that wasn't sufficient.
I did.
What did you decide to do?
I established a team that's now focused on consumer experience and safeguarding. And within that team, it's completely independent, the executive director reports directly to me. In that team is an internal audit function, a principal advisor. For safeguarding, which is recruitment's just been finalized for that role, we have practice leads for clinical care. Allied Health and positive behavior support. We also have a quality and policy and compliance team within that as well.
And are the personnel in those teams recruited from external sources or are they of audience?
There are three of the 12 resources in that team now that are internal candidates. And all went through an interview process and the most appropriate for the roles, the rest are all external candidates.
Did you just say three of the 12 resources?
Three of the 12 resources.
Are they people?
Are people.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I have brought up on screen document IND dot double zero seven one dot triple zero five. Dot double zero four eight. And page three of that document. This is an email from Ms Belli, member of the board. Can I take you to the bottom of page three, Mr Allen? Where she states. I've dedicated my entire life to look after vulnerable members of our society. Since I'm a registered health professional, I'm morally, ethically and legally obligated to do no harm. This also includes not being involved in passive neglect by doing nothing. Thereby causing harm to these vulnerable members of our society. What was the reaction to your recollection, Mr Allen? When board members received this email from this Bella?
Um, after the receipt of the email, there was a detailed and lengthy discussion. At the next board meeting following the email that was sent.
And what was the nature of the conclusions reached during that discussion at board level?
The nature of the discussions were, what measures could or should be put in place? To better address the issues that were flagged in the email. The then CEO and executive manager of specialist services. Argued very strongly that those, the points that have been raised were being addressed. By staff across the client service network. And that a centralized function was not required, that the distributed responsibility was more appropriate.
I have brought up. Documents A double F dot double zero one two dot triple zero three dot double zero sixteen. Which is the afford written response to CTH NTG double zero one nine six. To this commission and can page six be brought up? Can you see point four there, Mr Allen?
Not at the moment, I'm sorry, that needs to be, thank you.
This refers to the email I've just taken you to, and this document is a document provided by your lawyers. On afford's instructions. And it purports to answer. The question set out in point four.
Yes.
When one reads the balance of. The answer to point four from four point one to four point six. This seems to be. An interpretation of her concerns as being a healthcare concern. Is that fair?
Yes.
And I assume that was partly because she was a registered nurse.
Yes.
When one reads her original email, she's saying far more than healthcare, isn't she? She's saying that vulnerable participants are being put at risk. By what we're failing to do. Including passive neglect.
She was suggesting that those things could potentially be happening, yes.
And I want to suggest to you that the board response with respect misses the point. It seeks to diminish her concerns by characterising them in a certain way. What is that?
It certainly wasn't the board's intention to diminish those concerns.
I'm not going to question intent, Mr Allen, I'm looking at the reality of the response. And I'm going to suggest to you, the board response was wholly inadequate. To the concerns she raised.
There was very strong views and advice put forward by the former CEO and the then executive. Manager specialist services who I recall also had a nursing background. And the board, after this lengthy discussion, accepted those views and that advice.
And that's reflected in four point five, is it not? For these reasons, the board did not further pursue Ms Bella's proposal.
That's correct.
With the benefit of reflection. Would you, as a board member, reach the same conclusion today?
Definitely not.
Why would your view today be different from what it was in late 2019?
I have the benefit of much more information about the experiences of our clients and the potential risks that. Could befall them.
What do you understand today that she didn't properly appreciate in 2019?
I think that's reflected in the comments that Ms Tuohy has made and the new organisational structures. Particularly around customer experience and safeguarding.
But in broad terms, the paramount consideration of the afford organization. Was the care and protection of participants in their programs.
Yes.
Paramount can only mean one word, one thing, can't it?
Yes.
Surely that would have been in the mind of you as a board member in 2019. But the gist of what Ms Bella was raising went to that paramount concern.
Yes, and we had very lengthy and active discussions with the CEO and the relevant executive manager about how. Those concerns were being addressed in the way that the organisation was operating at that time.
But in 2019, you'd been on the board for four or five years at that point.
Four years, yes.
Did it not occur to you? That what Ms Bella was raising went to the very core of why afford existed?
Yes, absolutely, but the board also took into account the range of other initiatives, including in 2019. As I mentioned in my earlier evidence, the introduction of an independent group home community visitor. To provide further oversight and feedback to the board on the. Way in which the group homes were operating, the board was also cognizant of. The feedback that had been received from. Staff at at various staff occasions where where the board met with staff. And on the occasions that the board met with clients.
But 2019 is four years into your tenure and other board members have been around for up to 18 years. How is that answer of what you did in 2019 responsive to my question? Of why that paramount aim of the organisation was not being met adequately? Prior to that time.
I wasn't suggesting that that. Paramount point was not being met prior to that time. The organisation clearly and and the nature of the environment that we work in under the NDIS. Had changed and evolved and the care of our clients and the delivery of quality services. Remained paramount throughout all of that time.
Yes, but how is that reflected in action? If you. Put the category of supervision relating to incidents of violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation. In the hands of the HR department.
The HR department had certain responsibilities, there were. Over the years, a number of different executive managers that also had responsibility in in that area. The executive manager specialist services was one that is mentioned in that note there. Subsequent to that, it was the chief operating officer, so it's not correct to say that. It was exclusively the responsibility of HR, HR's responsibility very much goes to. The performance of staff.
Well, that's exactly my point, Mr Allen, the primary role of the HR department concerns the staff. Where is the primary interest of the participant being met? Under that arrangement?
As I've mentioned, the primary needs of the participant were being met through the customer services of the organisation and. Reflected in the executive manager specialist services role to oversight. Those matters relating to. Compliance as well as the chief operating officer being responsible for. Those at a later time in a, in a different executive structure.
Did you listen to the evidence of Mr Adamson?
Yes, I did.
He's been questioned by Ms Gleeson, the transcript page two eight three stroke thirty four to thirty seven. And he says, in relation to no centralized safeguarding function. So the main problem we had is we were a very lean organisation at the top. And with a lot of that responsibility falling on the team leaders or the district managers' shoulders to complete those tasks. At the executive level, there was, I guess, no executive in charge of safeguarding or quality risk or compliance. That all fell to the district manager and the team leader's shoulders. Do you accept the thrust of what Mr Adamson says describing what the situation was?
I don't dispute what Mr Adamson has said in his evidence. But there were executive managers reporting to the CEO with those responsibilities. Clearly, they were not effective enough by a long measure.
Well, when you say you accept what he says, he says in part. No executive in charge of safeguarding or quality risk or compliance, that's his assertion.
Yes, and I'm advising that there was a executive staff with those responsibilities. Up until around 2020, it was the executive manager specialist services, although I can't be clear on the date. And after that, it was the chief operating officer.
If that be the case. The person in that role seemed to have had a remarkably low profile of the organisation.
As I said earlier, clearly those arrangements were fundamentally ineffective.
So if we look back to the start. Your paramount aim as an organisation is the care and protection of participants you provide services to.
Yes.
And up until at least 2019, in reality. It wasn't sufficient priority to have somebody at a senior level responsible for that. And exercising those responsibilities properly, is that a fair summary?
There certainly were executives with those responsibilities, clearly from what I now know, those responsibilities were not exercised properly or effectively.
In other words, it might have been part of their job description, but they weren't doing it.
That's a fair comment.
Why did that not become apparent to the board prior to the concerns raised by Ms Bella?
Because on other information and and reporting material provided to the board. That concern wasn't flagged more strongly.
Well, who could it be flagged by? The person whose job it was apparently wasn't doing their job. And it was all delegated down to lower levels.
In the volume two board reports that I've referred to previously, there is information contained in those. That would provide the board with some insight into the effectiveness of service delivery. And any areas of concern like incidents taking place. Like complaints coming through, that material or that information was provided in some detail. And did lead to discussions with the CEO at board meetings if there were any areas of concern.
You weren't a member of the finance audit and risk committee, were you?
No, I was not.
But did you understand that? The minutes of this committee became part of the board papers?
Yes, they were provided to the board for information.
Do you recall why it is that as latest April 2019? It was resolved to develop a comprehensive risk management framework? In the sense of why wasn't one in place prior to that?
There were risk arrangements in place prior to that. The committee and the board were concerned that those were not extensive enough. Nor contemporary enough in their nature and so BDO were engaged. To assist in reviewing those and making recommendations for future arrangements.
And there was the tenor of some of the recommendations, that a unacceptably narrow view of risk was being adopted.
That's correct.
And that was that because in broad terms, risk was assessed from a financial point of view rather than from a participant point of view.
No, I don't think that's fair comment.
How would you describe the arrangement prior to 2019 insofar as it dealt with the risk to participants?
The organisation has always been very concerned about the quality of services and the safety of clients. And that's been evident to me in my time on the board and from what I understand of previous boards. There are a range of ways that the board can monitor, excuse me, monitor. And oversight those arrangements and indicators, as I've mentioned, were included in the volume two reports to the board.
Mr Allen, let me make it clear, I don't. Suggest that board members were not concerned in the general sense of the word about the welfare of participants. What I'm trying to get at is how that concern was manifested. What I'm trying to get at is how that concern was manifested and was it manifested effectively? I can take you to the audit committee minutes of April two thousand and nineteen, hearing bundle E at tab one hundred and ten, document reference A double F dot triple zero five dot triple zero one dot two five six eight at two nine seven three.
Do you mean two five seven three or two nine seven?
Two nine seven three.
That suggests the document is four hundred pages.
That's correct indeed. Perhaps I'll read out the relevant portion.
Thank you.
Where we're locating it. It says, the committee noted their support for the protocols in place, but identified the absence of a risk management plan. This is the finance and audit committee in April two thousand and nineteen. Risk management plan within the structure and offered examples of how this could be structured, including those provided by directors Mike Allen and Cliff Haynes. Recommendation that the executive create an overarching risk management plan for the organisation, including specific risk management plans for each key business area of the afford. As part of the Ford's risk management plan, a risk management register will be maintained and submitted to the committee quarterly. Do you recall?
Yes, I do.
Recommendation. Was that recommendation adopted by the board?
Yes, it was.
Was that recommendation implemented?
Yes.
I think that the resolution occurred at the April two thousand and nineteen board meeting, which I won't take you to. I think, Mr. Allen, you then were involved in setting up a complaints review. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And that appears in your statement at page five.
That's correct.
And that's when you engaged BDO?
They were not directly related initiatives. BDO were engaged just around the same time. But the review of our complaints mechanism was something I sought separately.
So is the role of BDO principally to develop a risk management framework?
Yes, a more encompassing enterprise risk management framework.
And that happened in September two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, that's my recollection.
And I think BDO presented for the board.
They did indeed.
And as a result of that, they indicated to the board various deficiencies.
Yes, they made a number of recommendations.
And those recommendations are accepted by the board?
Yes, they were.
How was the issue of participants' welfare and safety dealt with within the risk management proposal which was developed?
I'm sorry, I can't remember the detail of that proposal, but.
Do you recall the ANSFAI report, which is adhering bundle E at tab two oh eight?
Yes, I do.
I think you said earlier in your evidence yesterday that the board accepted all the recommendations of ANSFAI.
That's correct.
And part of what ANSFAI said was the board must take into account the effect on staff and clients of the absence of a risk framework.
Yes.
It has created luminous repetitive and high-risk processes.
Yes.
The sense of overwhelm and fatigue in the organisation can in part be attributed to the reactive nature of the business. The lack of clear plans and predictive forecasting of risks prevents people from knowing what is coming over the hill and impedes preparation and mitigation of known defects.
Yes.
And the board accepted that assessment by ANSFAI.
Yes, they did.
They went on to say many red flags that indicate the risk framework was not functioning according to the government's policy. And there's no evidence the committee executed its responsibilities to address the lack of performance. So in a nutshell, ANSFAI seemed to be pointing out widespread deficiencies in the arrangements that are forward and also suggesting the specific committee to whom those responsibilities were delegated were not meeting those responsibilities.
Yes, that's what was indicated.
And that's what was accepted by the board?
Yes, it was. But the board, the nature of the board discussions at that time also reflected on the other comments made in the report that, notwithstanding the work and the effort that the organisation went to with the implementation of the BDO review recommendations, there appeared to be a lack of management commitment to implement the arrangements or inculcate the risk management approach and focus across the organisation. And the audit and risk committee had sought assurances from the then management that that had taken place, but clearly it had not.
One of the outstanding features of the ANSFAI report is that they interviewed extensively staff members.
Yes.
And in that report, they identified issues raised by staff members, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
Including no risk management training for line managers. No staff I interviewed report ever seeing the risk management policy. And so on.
Yes.
That must have been a considerable concern to the board when you read that report.
A very grave concern.
And did it prompt the question, why did we as board members not know of all these concerns the staff had at the frontline?
Yes.
What did the board do about that revelation?
The board had already begun a process of renewal of the organisation through the recruitment of Ms. Tui and subsequently her restructure of the staffing arrangements and the new executive team that she's putting in place. Prior to that, the organisation had an interim CEO from around the beginning of May until early October in twenty twenty one and had started some measures with that interim CEO.
There's one final observation made in the report. A Ford captures significant volumes of incident information. However, with such a strong compliance orientation overlay to its risk culture, incident management is focused more on meeting regulatory obligations and driving systemic improvements from thematic incident analysis. Now, putting the jargon aside, when ANSFAI saying to you, you collect all this information, but you don't know what to do with it?
I think it's said to me that we collected all of that information and we didn't analyse it, deal with it and respond to it effectively.
The effect of that was, what was the point in collecting it?
Indeed.
The tenor of the report suggests that the organisation, or at least the executive team, were more concerned with technical compliance with regulatory matters than learning everything from the content of the information being collected. In hindsight, is that a fair summary?
Yes, it is.
Does it flow from that concession, Mr. Allen, that before the changes you've referred to occurred, a Ford's approach to risk management was fundamentally deficient?
We now understand that to be the case.
And you accept that proposition, don't you?
I certainly do, yes.
Because what the ANSFAI report did is it disclosed, disclosed deep-rooted systemic failures in assessing and responding to risk. And the result of that was having an adverse effect on your staff and their ability to effectively perform their safeguarding role.
Yes.
Do you agree?
And that's why we've put the new arrangements in place.
Ms. Tui, how have the new arrangements overcome the deficiencies we've been discussing that were previously in the organisation?
Well, the work's only just starting, in fairness. I think, as I explained yesterday, in response to one of the questions, the first six months for me have been about putting in the right capability in the teams in the organisation. So the consumer experience and safeguarding team are now in place. We now have a director of enterprise risk who has independent responsibility for our enterprise risk management framework across the organisation. She has adopted a reporting line directly to the audit and risk committee. We've amended the terms of reference to the audit and risk committee, Mike and I, Mr. Allen and I, for, to ensure that includes matters around clinical governance, governance, client safety, so that it's a more balanced approach.
Can I ask you to pause there? This is a process will take some time.
It will take, yeah, it will take some time.
How can the board be satisfied whilst this process is being implemented? That participants are being safely careful?
So in conjunction with the implementation of the risk management framework, one of the functions of the experience and safeguarding team is exactly what you were describing a minute ago in relation to our complaints and incident management. For example, so the board will see performance reporting in relation to that that will come to the board monthly. That will also include trends and insights and continuous improvement initiatives. So that our data then gets analysed and where we see opportunities for improvement, it's not just about the particular incident, it becomes an organisational wide initiative. So the board will get significantly increased visibility around that over the next two to three months.
Is that another matter that I can flag that the commission might require an update report from you later in the year?
Yes, I will.
Can commissioners have any questions in relation to this issue before I move to the matter of Daniel Namali?
No, carry on, I think.
Sinamali's situation, as I indicated in my opening, I don't want to go back through because it's not suggested by council assisting that a Ford knew about his behaviour. We accept on the evidence that's been presented to us, but the organisation became aware of it as a result of police investigation. Mr. Tui, when you started the CEO, were you made aware of a number of incidents relating firstly to Nana Apron and secondly in relation to Daniel Namali?
Yes, I was.
What was the nature of the information provided to you and what documents were provided to you to bring you up to speed?
I went through, had conversations with one of our staff around the incident reporting that had occurred. So I saw the incident reports that had been lodged with the commission in relation to both Ms. Apron and the issue relating to Daniel Namali. I also read the investigation reports that had also been commissioned by the organisation.
And you outline in detail in your statement that information. Did you look at the NDIS Commission reportable incident notifications submitted by a Ford?
I did.
And did you review that on the CIMS program?
No, someone, I asked someone just to produce me a book of documents.
Did you look at any afford abuse or neglect procedure in place at the time?
I looked at our current policy.
And did you reach any conclusions having looked at that policy?
The policy needs review. So like, like many of the policies that we have in place, particularly those that relate to our participants, the voice of the participant itself is actually not necessarily heard in our policies and our procedures. And I think that our our policy around abuse and neglect, that flavour of safeguarding and what that means across the whole organisation, because for me safeguarding is not just about a policy or a procedure or a particular approach to incidents, it's actually about how the organisation works. And so that for me wasn't reflected either in the policy.
Did you understand that a Ford at the time were conscious of not interfering with or cutting across police investigation?
I was after I had conversations with staff, yes.
Once the police had concluded their investigation and brought charges, did you find any evidence that a Ford had been made their own inquiries as to whether other participants who weren't the subject of charges had been subjected to abusive treatment by Mr. Namali?
No, I did not.
Do you find any evidence that a Ford had contacted the participants and or their families to alert them specifically to the fact that there'd been a police investigation and charges had been made?
No, I did not.
Did you find any evidence of communication to that group of people inviting them to come forward if they had further information in relation to the treatment they received themselves or the family had been told of such treatment?
No, I did not.
Given your experience as a CEO, if confronted with that situation during your tenure, what approach would you take?
My approach would be different. Right from the moment of the phone call from the police to alert us to the incident, I would have made every effort to actually have a face-to-face conversation with the relevant family members rather than a phone call in the first instance to inform them that the police had made contact. It's difficult for an organisation when it's an ongoing investigation, obviously, for us to have particular types of conversations. But I would have appointed an external probably disability advocacy organisation to provide independent advocacy and support for each of the families separately. And then that person being able to see them right through until a criminal investigation so that the family had ongoing support. I probably would have communicated more broadly with the families of the Mount Drua Day Programme as well. You know, I think it's always open and transparent is always best in our family communications. I don't want people hearing things third hand. So the moment he was charged, I would have organised the family meetings to occur at the day programme. And we would have continued to support the families through that as well as our staff, because our staff obviously were quite significantly impacted by it as well. I think one of the things that, which goes to your overarching safeguarding framework is then, you know, doing that full review of our participants' client files, for example, to make just a reass, I mean, it's part of that investigation that occurred. For me, the worksite investigation looked to see whether there was policy process procedure. It didn't take a safeguarding approach. So I probably would have appointed a critical incident investigator who actually had experience in physical sexual abuse investigations because I find that they take a much broader view of the investigation. That then would have given us opportunities for improvement more broadly. And they would have looked at things like our environment. So I would have gone to the opportunity for the abuse as opposed to just the actual incident itself.
Mr. Allen, as you sit here today, do you know for a fact whether any of the other participants involved with Daniel Namali suffered at his hands other than the ones charged?
No, I don't.
A Ford has had available two with the opportunity of obtaining legal advice in respect to a police investigation. And as far as you're aware, there is no impediment for someone from the organisation to contact the officer in charge of any investigation to discuss to contact the officer in charge of any investigation to discuss things that you propose to do to ensure yourself that they don't prejudice that investigation. Is that correct?
Yes, that opportunity existed and my understanding is that the then CEO had those, the nature of those discussions with the police involved.
What did he report to the board about any discussions he had with the police involved?
I can't recall the specific comments, but broadly that the police were very clear that they didn't want afford to take any actions that would impede or prejudice in any way their investigation.
Let's assume for the moment that that was the advice Mr. Harold was given. What about when Mr. Namali had been charged and convicted? Was any inquiry made at the police as to whether there was any impediment at that point?
Not that I'm aware of.
Why has afford failed to do the sorts of things that Mr. Tooie just outlined?
I can't give you an answer or a reason that I would find satisfactory. I do not understand why more was not done to support our clients and their families and carers.
The abuse engaged in by Mr. Namali was, I suggest to you, secretive and opportunistic. It wasn't criminal conduct where he assaulted someone in a room with 20 other people, Chris, wasn't it?
No, it was not.
It came to the attention of police accidentally in relation to other inquiries that make him mad. Do you accept that?
Yes, I understand that's the case.
In those circumstances, why wouldn't the organisation have a priority to check if all other people at risk as soon as they're able to do that?
The organisation should have done that, but I'm not clear whether that took place.
But was not that not discussed at board level?
There were a range of discussions at board level about this matter from first reporting and afterwards. I can't recall the specific detail of all of those conversations, but certainly the board had made inquiries of the then CEO about the welfare of our participants, about our concern for their families and ensuring that counselling had been offered and that everything else that could reasonably done was being done.
I suggest to you that perhaps the worst thing that can happen in an organisation such as yours is the death of a person.
Absolutely.
And even though it's odious to grade things, possibly the next most serious thing is someone will be the subject of criminal conduct.
Yes.
Assault or abuse.
Yes.
I take it that that doesn't happen on a regular basis at a forward in your experience?
Neither of those two things have happened previously in my afford experience.
And so when they did happen, when it became apparent what Mr. Namali had been doing, that would have been a very shocking revelation to the board, would it not?
Absolutely.
It would have then been prioritised to the very top of your list of things to do, correct?
Yes.
Can I repeat? Why were the things that, for example, Mr. Tooie suggested, not immediately done?
The board sought assurance from the CEO that everything that could reasonably be done was being done.
Was the CEO asked, Mr. Harold, there are a certain number of participants who are the subject of criminal charges. How many participants in this programme did Mr. Namali have one on one contact with?
I don't recall that those questions were asked at the CEO.
Was he asked to provide, excuse me, such a list?
He was asked to provide information upon the number of clients that had been the subject of that abuse, yes.
Well, there's a difference between identifying those which are the subject of police investigation that lead to charges. Were you aware that there were other investigations by police that didn't lead to charges?
No, I was not aware of that.
And then that leaves the third group that weren't the subject of any investigation but may have been involved in what positions with you, correct?
Yes.
I can't fathom from your answer why in those circumstances the board would not follow through on the things that had been suggested, except to say we're assured by the CEO.
In hindsight, yes, clearly there was the more the board should have done.
Because the CEO wasn't giving you the assurances that we're now talking about today.
No, he was not.
I'm reluctant to use the word, but no audit was done as to the people that were vulnerable to Mr. Namali to try and ascertain whether or not there'd been further misconduct.
Advice from the police was very clearly that there were no other afford participants involved beyond those that had been identified.
Did the board then direct the executive to undertake what I might call a root cause analysis to work out what were the circumstances that led to this happening?
No, such an investigation wasn't undertaken, only that investigation undertaken by worksite investigations.
So at the end of the day, what did the board learn from this incredibly unfortunate series of events?
The nature of the risks that exist for our clients and the need to be very clear with our staff about their requirements and the management of those risks.
Did the board receive any information from the CEO that outlined information obtained from participants or parents about their dealings with Mr. Namali?
Not that I recall in a formal way, but certainly advice from the CEO that he had had discussions with the families.
Was that oral advice with no board paper to reflect that?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Mr. Ellen, can I share another impression with you?
Yes, Chair.
It does seem this board was the captive of the CEO for years, doesn't it?
I don't think that was the case, but I understand the view.
Well, at this stage, at the CEO's tenure, the board in the light of the questions that Mr. Griffin has put to you and the answers you have given, it appears that the board was content with assurances from the CEO, notwithstanding the gravity of the events which had occurred. It's very difficult at the moment for me to see how that can be interpreted other than a board in effect being controlled by the CEO.
I'm not sure there's an answer to that.
No.
I think that's the comment, Chair, and I understand the point that you're making.
Thank you.
Document A double F dot triple zero five dot triple zero one dot one seven one four is the board meeting minutes of the 20th of May 2020.
Mr. Griffin, could you give us the bundle and if I had a number, that would be helpful at least for for me, thank you.
Bundle E tab 73, I understand. Mr. Ellen, I invite you to look at those minutes. It doesn't appear to be any reference to Mr. Namali in circumstances where this meeting occurred two weeks after his arrest.
There were various exchanges between, email exchanges between the board and the CEO in relation to that incident, and it was subsequently reported in the CEO's report.
But going back to my original question, the board meeting two weeks after his arrest doesn't have any recorded reference to the matter at all.
No.
That's surprising.
I understand your surprise.
When did you as a board member first become aware of Mr. Namali's situation?
I recall that the incident was reported very promptly upon advice from the police, whether it was the same day or not, it was certainly a very quick response, the same day or the day after.
And even though there may have been email correspondence, should not such a significant event be referred to in the minutes suggesting that it had been discussed at a formal board meeting?
Yes, in hindsight, it should have.
That suggests it wasn't discussed at that meeting.
It was discussed at the meeting to the best of my recollection. It was a matter that the board took very gravely because of the nature of the impact on our clients and the nature of the offending.
Who is responsible for during the minutes of the meeting? Is that a matter of the company secretary?
The company secretary who at that time is mentioned in the minutes, yes.
And those minutes would then have to be approved at a subsequent meeting?
Yes, they will.
Despite that, your recollection, there was a discussion?
There were a number of discussions at that time, and as I indicated, a number of email exchanges between the board and the CEO.
This was the same meeting where Ms. Stace made a presentation to the board on the Disability Royal Commission.
Yes.
That didn't focus anybody's mind on what had happened.
In regard to the Namali matter?
Hmm. That's a pretty substantial case of abuse, isn't it?
Very substantial, Chair, yes.
You would have heard evidence earlier this week from Sally, from Susie and from Lily.
I have heard all of the evidence this week, Mr. Griffin.
The gist of their evidence without going into detail was that the telephone call from Stephen Harold was the only contact they had from afford about Daniel Namali's abuse, in the case of Sally, of Jason, in the case of Susie, of her son. And in relation to Lily, did not receive any communication from Ford about it at all. When you heard that evidence, were you surprised?
I was shocked, surprised and deeply saddened. And I mean that in all seriousness.
Do I take it that Mr. Harold reported to the board that he telephoned those three people?
Yes, he had.
Do you recollect what he told the board, the nature of the discussion which took place during that call?
I don't recall the detail that he reported on, but I would have expected, having heard the evidence, I would have expected from what Mr. Harold had said that much more was done and much more was said in support of those families and our participants.
But he didn't say much more had been done, that was your expectation, is that right?
He indicated more had been done than the families had advised in their evidence.
And is that detail of what more had been done outlined in any document that went to the board?
Not that I recall. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be evasive, I simply don't.
Did Mr. Harold suggest there'd been an apology?
Yes, he said he had apologised to the families.
And we now know he hadn't.
Yes, we do. I would have expected that's very least that he would have said.
Do you accept that afford did not proactively engage with the participants of the Mount Drew Day Programme who were abused by Namali or with their families about the impact of the abuse?
Yes, I do.
Do you accept that afford did not provide any written communication with those people in relation to his abuse?
Yes, I do.
Do you accept that afford did not provide a written apology in any or any form of address to the people abused by Namali?
Yes, I do.
Do you consider, as of today, that afford needs to offer redress to the victims of Daniel Namali?
Afford needs to quickly consider a whole range of measures in relation to the families and the suffering that they've experienced.
If not, I appreciate that answer, Mr. Ellen. The board's had this knowledge for a long period of time. Why does it now quickly have to do something? Why hasn't it done something already?
Because the board is much clearer about the failings of our relationship and our efforts to support those families.
But in simple terms, a court has accepted or a court has convicted Mr. Namali of a number of offences involving participants in that programme.
Yes.
Once that conviction was recorded, what was the impediment to offer redress to each of the victims?
There was no impediment.
Do you accept that redress can take many forms?
Yes, I do.
One of those forms is financial compensation.
Yes.
Why hasn't afford offered financial compensation to those victims?
Because the organisation hasn't considered the matter of redress.
And because no claim has been made on their behalf, presumably.
That's correct, Chair.
So the organisation perhaps can be said to be waiting to see whether there's any claim, right?
In fairness, Chair, I don't think the organisation's been waiting for that.
It just hasn't.
At the same time, we haven't considered the matter of redress.
So it just hasn't been considered at all?
No, it hasn't.
What needs to be considered? Do you not have a discretion as the board to make a decision?
Yes, we do, and there, as you've indicated, a range of ways in which redress can be provided. And having heard the evidence of the families earlier this week, that is a matter that I will take up with the board.
When you say having heard the evidence of the families, you've had access to their statements for a little longer than that, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
And the oral evidence given at this hearing has not significantly departed from what was in their statements?
No, it has not.
So it's only, it's not only this week that this issue has crystallised?
No, it has not.
Has the board considered that it might be the right thing to do to get on the front foot and apologise and offer compensation irrespective of whether a claim has been made?
The board will consider that, yes.
Do you have any idea what factors the board will take into account in that consideration?
Not specifically at this point, there's a range of impacts on the individuals and the families that the board needs to take into consideration as part of that process.
So do I take it from that answer that one of the options available to the board is to provide individualised redress in each case as opposed to offering identical redress for each person?
I'm not constraining any of the options at this point, Mr. Griffin.
I think we saw the report of the CEO following the report of the death that occurred in which she informed the board that the insurer had been notified. Has the insurer been notified about the Mr. Namali abuse?
I believe so, Chair. I'm not completely certain, but I expect that would be the case, yes.
Commissions, don't have any questions on that issue, I want to move on to another topic.
I think I detected a shake of the head on the left, but a hand is up on the left.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, you said earlier in regard to the Namali situation, that the police clearly advise you that they believe there were no more than the clients that they identified who had been abused by Mr. Namali.
That's correct.
In this Royal Commission, we've heard from disabled people that they have barriers in reporting matters of abuse, including from people who are non-verbal, don't have access to communication devices. We've heard that police often dismiss or will not pursue the matter any further, et cetera. I mean, I can go into detail, but essentially the key things are not being able to report matters and police dismiss them. I'm not suggesting that there may have been more clients, but I'm suggesting would it inadequate for the board to just simply accept that police advice that there were no more potential abuse cases? Do you think that's adequate?
No, I don't think that's adequate. The more appropriate approaches are those that were outlined by Ms. Tui. And I deeply regret that that was not done at the time.
Thank you.
Let me move on to the issue of the evidence of Rachel and what I'll describe as the whistleblower report, the disclosure. The board received a disclosure from Rachel, which appears in hearing bundle D at tab six, document reference IND dot double zero seven one dot triple zero three dot triple zero three. Do you recall receiving that disclosure?
Yes, I do recall receiving the disclosure. It was forwarded to me personally.
And you heard the dulcet tones of Miss Beatty read Rachel's statement in this hearing?
Yes, I did.
She set a standard, the rest of us are trying to emulate, no success whatsoever.
She certainly did.
In response to that disclosure, did the board commission what's known as the Weir Report?
Yes, in response to the allegations, the board did a number of things. We first engaged an independent law firm that had not worked with the organisation previously. We then engaged through Weir, a separate person to be the whistleblower protection officer because under a Ford's whistleblowing whistleblower protection policy, we had a pre-identified whistleblower protection officer, Janice McLean. But because of the pre-existing relationship between Miss Clay and the CEO, I'm not suggesting they were friends, it's just that they had a working relationship because other whistleblower protection allegations not involving the CEO would have been dealt with between Miss McLean and the CEO. So we wanted some independence and support for the whistleblower. And then a separate person through Weir who was engaged to in fact undertake the investigation. So I'm just trying to make quite, there were two separate people, one from Weir, one was the whistleblower protection officer to support the staff member and the other was to undertake the investigation.
And the Weir Report appears that here in bundle D at tab seven, document A W F dot triple zero five dot triple zero one dot eight three one three. Perhaps if that can be brought up. The second report I'm told is...
Yes, I was going to say, this is not the investigation report.
The second document is hearing bundle D tab nine, which bears a document number of A W F triple zero eight dot triple zero one dot zero one zero three. You're familiar with that report, Mr. Allen?
Yes, I am.
Was the board satisfied with the comprehensiveness of that report?
Yes, it was.
And as a response, did the board issue Mr. Harold with a warning letter?
Yes, it did. I found a warning letter, as I recall.
Which appears in hearing bundle D at tab five. Given the fact that you were satisfied with the Weir Report, what steps were taken to implement the recommendations of that report?
A number of steps were taken to implement those recommendations. I can't recall the detail of those off the top of my head.
What we've been able to track through, Mr. Allen, is that the business improvement, quality systems update and register, which appears at hearing bundle E tab one one three capital C, document A W F dot triple zero five dot triple zero one dot four double two six at page four three two nine, shows that the recommendations in the report were identified for further action, as you've indicated, but no timeframes were allocated to many of those recommendations for the implementation. Do you agree?
Yes, I accept, I can't. My vision's a little impaired and I can't see exactly that, but I accept that that's the view.
And on the 20th of February 2020, Rachel emailed you, I believe, at hearing bundle E tab two six nine, document number A W F dot triple zero five dot triple zero one dot eight zero double five, saying she has been bullied by the CEO and there are now vexatious and frivolous complaints being made against her. And she refers to Stephen Harold not acting on the concerns she had raised about compliance. Do you recall receiving that email?
Yes, I do. I had a number of conversations.
After receiving, after receiving that email on the 20th of February 2020, what did you do to protect her?
I spoke with Rachel directly, as I had done on a number of occasions from the time that she lodged the allegations and I also followed up with her whistleblower protection officer as well.
Do you have any discussions with Mr. Harold as a result of receiving that email?
I had discussions with the then-chair about that email.
And do you understand whether or not he had discussions with Mr. Harold?
I believe he did.
And then subsequently, on the 5th of March, did Rachel send you an email raising a formal grievance against the CEO?
Yes, she did.
In the response provided by Ford to the commission, the notice to give information that A W F dot double zero one two dot triple zero three dot double zero double two at dot double zero double two, paragraph six, a Ford says board was not aware Mr. Harold had commissioned a report from Barry Wise to investigate allegations against Rachel. Is that perfect?
That's correct. The board did become aware when Rachel raised that matter with myself.
Now, if the CEO has commissioned an independent report considering conduct of another senior executive, would you, as a board member, be expected to be advised of that?
If it was one of the CEO's direct reports, I would have expected at the very least that that would have been raised with the chair.
Because?
Because the functioning of the executive, the executive team, those people reporting to the CEO is a matter that the board should have some oversight of.
It raises a concern, doesn't it, that the CEO might be seeking a report into the person who made the disclosure as a form of retaliation?
It could seem that way, yes.
So that was clearly a possibility, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
In those circumstances, given the allegations made against Mr. Harold, why didn't the board direct him to quarantine himself completely from the issue?
My understanding is that a verbal direction to that extent was provided.
Are you aware of anywhere where that direction is in writing?
No, I'm not.
With the benefit of hindsight, confronted with that situation again, should that action be taken to quarantine the CEO of many involvement in relation to the complaints?
That option should be seriously considered, yes.
And the reason for that is whistleblowers place themselves in a very vulnerable position, don't they?
Yes, they do.
Particularly in circumstances when their complaint concerns a superior.
That's correct.
And one of the roles of a board in that situation is to step in and protect the whistleblower because of the power imbalance with the person being complained about.
Yes, but there was no evidence that the then-CEO was aware of the whistleblowing complaint having been made. At that time, there was clearly a breakdown in the relationship between the then-CEO and his senior staff member.
Ms. Tui, if confronted with a similar disclosure today, what response would you have as a matter of process?
Well, I'm used to whistleblower alerts going directly to the board, so the board actually makes a decision about the response to the process, which is as it should be to protect staff members involved. I think it would have been hard through the investigation for the ex-CEO not to have had some indication through the interviews of where some of the concerns might have come from when you read through the investigation report, given some of the correspondence that had gone on between the previous CEO and that senior staff member prior to.
By that, do you mean it's not difficult by a process of deduction to work out who the whistleblower is?
Yeah.
If you're an insider yourself?
Exactly, yeah. Particularly when there's been correspondence between the two parties already about the issues of concern. It makes it very hard. It would have still made it very hard for the board, I think, even to have protected the senior staff member from, you know, being known as the whistleblower. The ex-CEO should not have initiated the investigations, the ex-senior member, without consultation with the chair. And if there was to be an investigation because of concerns and it would have been better being commissioned by the board itself as opposed to the CEO, given the whistleblower a load that occurred previously.
Would you agree that the action of the CEO in commissioning that report was both improper and displayed a lack of judgment?
I do.
A lack of judgment to the extent that you would expect much more of someone holding a position as CEO?
I would.
In your experience, Ms. Tui, have you ever come across a whistleblower who's had their career advanced by being a whistleblower?
No.
It's a fundamental problem of the system, isn't it? That someone who has the courage to come forward is rarely rewarded. Would you agree with that general proposition?
Generally, yes.
And that's another reason why it's so important to protect them.
It is.
Under the current policy of Ford, are you comfortable that someone in a position of a whistleblower could be of, I won't use the word of Ford, could be given sufficient protection in those circumstances?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
In your reading about these issues, were you aware of any exit interview in relation to Rachel?
No, I haven't seen anything of that nature.
In those circumstances, in your view, would it be a good procedure if the person decided to leave the organisation to discuss at length why with them?
It certainly would be, but I do understand that Mr. Allen and the senior staff member had numerous conversations.
Are they recorded anywhere?
Generally, if we'd had a conversation of substance, I recorded that in an email that I sent to confirm the nature of the discussions with Rachel. I did ask her if she wanted to participate in an exit interview. I didn't record that, but she did decline. It was one of the areas that I discussed at that stage. In fairness, she just wanted to get away.
Mr. Allen, you referred to the former CEO receiving a final warning as the result of that, what I'll describe as the first investigation into his conduct, because there were at least two.
Yes, there was.
Why was it a final warning? What did you mean by final warning? Or what did the board mean by final warning? Was there a previous warning?
No, there wasn't a previous warning, but it was the combination of a number of considerations for the board, principally the outcomes of the investigation, but other more general related concerns.
I see, thank you. Yes.
Rachel's disclosure didn't only relate to Mr. Harold, did it?
No, it did not.
In relation to the non-Herald part of the disclosure, what did the board do in relation to her other issues she raised?
A number of measures were taken. One of the areas that was identified in the allegations was around reportable incidents and an audit was requested of the CEO of reportable incidents.
Chair, tentatively, that concludes my termination, but given the time, I was wondering whether we might adjourn for lunch and have the opportunity to speak to those instructively as to whether there are any other issues that wish for the canvas. Would that be acceptable, sir?
That would be acceptable if we can't finish immediately.
I just don't want to have buyer's remorse, Chair.
All right, well, it's now one fifty. I take it that you have completed your examination?
Subject.
So the idea is not that Ms. Tui and Mr. Allen are excused, they may be needed after lunch?
Can I put it this way, that I don't want them excused at the moment, but if I come to the view shortly into the lunch and break that I'd have nothing else and subject to the course to whether Mr. Watson and anyone else has questions, they could in those circumstances be released?
All right. Well, then, what we will do is adjourn, but I'll just give the commissioners an opportunity if there are any other questions they wish to ask of either Ms. Tui or Mr. Allen. Commissioner Bennett?
Ms. Tui, you earlier referenced changes that you're bringing about.
Yes.
And obviously, some of those, you have an area now that's safeguarding. Some of your clients will be going from group home to day programme back to group home. One congregated setting, one segregated setting. How are you going to, or those that some people who may not be verbal as Commissioner McKeon said? How are you going to, or those that some people who may not be verbal as Commissioner McKeon said, how are you going to bring in your safeguarding some sunlight, independent of a Ford? So that there are, whether it's volunteers or maybe advocates in the disability sector to actually see and be able to have the interest of that participant at their forefront?
That will certainly form part of the overall framework. I mean, I think it's for me, it's important for the organisation to have independence in terms of an independent function to make sure that, you know, I can sleep at night, satisfied. But it's also important to get an external view as well. I mean, part of you know, part of our role is to ensure that in fact our participants have access to advocacy. You know, it's, so.
And how do you do that? For those, particularly those people with disability that I'm referring to, how do you give them access?
Well, I think you can connect them up to different appropriate advocacy organisations, you know, whether or not that's through volunteering, as you said. You know, whether or not you know, that's by connecting them up to other external groups. I mean, I think, you know, I mean, one of the things that happens in a Ford is that we do have a number of our participants who in fact, you know, attend our employment services, who might live in our homes, who might go to the day programs. One of the issues we currently have with the old structure, which is just being addressed now, is that we don't have, we don't have an end-to-end view of what someone's experience is like with us because we have different management structures that look after each of the different components of their journey with us. I think even just us having visibility over what someone's end-to-end experience is like means that we can in fact then better meet the needs of participants who are in fact in our care.
But that would still be in a forward view of what's happening to that person.
Sure.
I'm trying to sort of get concrete about how do you give these people external support? Particularly those that may not be returning to their family in an evening or in a weekend.
I'll have to take that on notice.
I'd be very interested.
Yeah, but it's important to that. Yeah.
Just one question at this point. Ms Tui, in your witness statement, which I assume you have been funded you.
Yes.
4.9, can I take you to 4.9 clause F? It's on page five. I'll just rub it out. The establishment of a structure that supports service duty requirement within the Australian disability enterprise. In this Royal Commission, we've heard a lot, particularly from disabled people, who want to work in open employment. What steps are you taking at a Ford to ensure that they can achieve that goal? And perhaps even transition out of, say, an ADE?
So we actually, we actually work with participants in three different areas. One is the ADE. We also have the DAS, the Disability Employment Services, where actually, in fact, we are supporting people to work in open employment. And we also do the school leaders program. So we work quite closely with schools and school leaders, and that is about actually trying to transition people, obviously, as much as possible through to open employment. One of the things we've been talking about is this this move away from that sort of congregate employment environment. And so a number of our participants, I think, as I alluded to yesterday, some of them are actually in management roles within the AGEs currently. And the goal is in fact about, is always about trying to get people through into open employment. One of the things that happens culturally at the moment is that we we don't see our supported employer issue. In fact, actually, many of them actually love working for a Ford. It's, they love the friends, they love the social connection they have, they actually love being part of the organisation. But viewing people as supported employees, it's just, instead of just viewing people as employees of a Ford, then means that what we're doing is we're petitioning that group of employees to a particular workplace rather than actually giving them other career opportunities. So one of the things I've done within the new executive director of people role, for example, is I have a very strong focus both in her role in our learning and development, new learning and development team as well around career progression. So whether that's with us or whether or not that is then with us using our other employment services to move people onto open employment, but it's about us actually viewing those employees as actual afford employees, so they have exactly the same opportunities as any other staff member in the organisation. It's a bit of a journey for us. It will be a bit of a journey. It's been a very traditional way of working for quite some time.
Thank you.
I'd just like to clear up something that I didn't quite understand from Mr Adamson's evidence. I appreciate that you can't speak, Ms Tui, as to the circumstances prior to your engagement as the CEO. The situation is where in the day progress, for example, it is ascertained that the participant needs greater support, maybe moving from one to three to one to one. In order for that to happen, as I followed the evidence, there has to be an application to the NDIA in the ordinary circumstance in order to get the funding that enables this to occur, that involves a delay. What I'm not, I wasn't clear about from Mr Adamson's evidence, but just concentrating on what happens now, what does happen now in that intervening period and how long is it normal?
I can't comment on the length of time it is normally, but in many circumstances, and in fact, it would be the majority of circumstances, the organisation previously and still continues to provide the necessary support that's required. So even while the organisation, we would not be alone in the sector with this because we can't just suddenly turn off the supports that are required or not provide what actually might be required if it's an increasing staff ratio, for example. So if someone was increased from, needed support from a, say, three to one ratio, we would provide that while we were waiting for the plan to be reviewed and for the funding to be increased. We wouldn't just not provide the required supports regardless of whether we're receiving funding for it at that time.
And assuming that the NDIA approves the amendment to the plan or a fresh plan that provides funding, can that in practice be retrospective to cover the period?
It can, yes.
So that a Ford, in effect, can be reimbursed for their monies that it has laid out in that intervening period?
That's right.
I see. All right. Thank you. Can I ask, please, Ms Tui, when you first became aware of the WISE report, do you know the one I'm referring to?
Refresh my memory.
That's the one into the circumstances relating to the abuse.
Oh, the MOLI report, that would be actually about November. So that would be about November twenty last, twenty-one last year. So I've only been, I've only been in the organisation for.
That's when you read the report?
Yeah.
You told us a little earlier that the changes relating to mobile phones came in three months ago approximately. Reading that report, it would seem, at least, it seemed to me fairly obvious that there was a major problem with the way phones were used. Why, reading that report, wouldn't there be a change immediately?
Look, to be honest, I had made an assumption that the actions from the report, because it was over, you know, quite some time ago. I had made the assumption that the actions required have actually already been implemented in the organisation.
All right. Thank you. The second report on the previous CEO, this may be from Mr Ellen, the one that was actually completed after the previous CEO had resigned, was that report provided to the NDIS Quality and Safeguard Commission?
I'm not clear, Chair. I'm sorry, I can't recall whether it was or it wasn't.
All right. And I'm sorry, yes?
I will check, yes.
All right, if you wouldn't mind. And just one more question, Ms Tui. I wasn't quite clear as to the precise status of the business improvement plan. Where has it reached and if it hasn't been?
It has been approved by the board. It has gone to the Quality and Safeguard Commission, as I said, I would do in my meeting with them, and that was sent prior to the correspondence that I received from the register last week. And it's now being broken down into individual unit plans. So it's the plan by which myself and the executive and senior leadership team will be measured for the next eighteen months.
I see. All right. Well, thank you very much. Mr Griffin, you're looking as though you're about to say something.
In the interim, I've had discussions with my colleagues and there is no further issues I wish to raise, so that formally concludes my examination of these witnesses.
All right. Thank you. In that case, thank you very much, Ms Tui and Mr Ellen for giving evidence.
All right. So there hasn't been a formal development procedural for it or a material development. No questions for us.
Thank you, Mr Watson. Thank you for your assistance.
Chair, if you can then, one more question relating to your question about the business improvement plan. Ms Tui, one question, final question for me. At 4.34, where you refer to the, in your witness statement about the business improvement plan, clause C says that you'll be engaging with service duty to provide feedback and insight into a Ford's current model and code design of new model. What do those new models include? Can you briefly describe that?
That's actually the way we provide our residential environments and our day programs and our employment services. So it's actually about all of our service delivery.
Would that include transitions, as I asked earlier, that transition to mainstream setting, inclusive activities in the community or that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And in addition to our thanks for your giving evidence, Ms Tui, you have a big job.
Thank you.
Yes, all right. Thank you. Shall we now adjourn?
Or do you wish to proceed to closing directions or do those after lunch?
Well, that depends upon whether, oh, we can now finish because you've decided you don't need any further consideration.
Correct.
Right. In that case, we can proceed to directions. Ms Tui and Mr Ellen, by all means, notionally step down, although it's on the same level. And now we will deal with the directions that need to be made, as I understand that these directions have been discussed with the parties given leave to appear.
That's great, Chair.
Agree with them. We think they were sensible.
Mr Watson, you're doing extraordinarily well. The directions that are to be made are the any witness who took questions on notice during this hearing should provide his or her answers in writing to the office of the solicitor assisting the Royal Commission by 10 June 2022. The answers should be targeted and concise and not address additional or unnecessary matters. Counsel assisting the Royal Commission may tender those responses into evidence. Two, by 17 June 2022, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will provide a list of all documents he wishes to tender into evidence, including responses to questions on notice on a confidential basis to the parties with leave to appear at this hearing. Three, parties with leave to appear should advise the office of the solicitor assisting by 27 June 2022 if they wish to suggest any additional documents for tendering by counsel assisting. At the same time, they should identify any parts of the documents to be tendered that they consider need to be removed before the documents are made public with reasons. Four, counsel will tender those documents into evidence, which he considers appropriate, and he will do that in chambers by 6 July 2022. Five, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will prepare written submissions following the hearing. By 5 August 2022, these submissions will be provided on a confidential basis to parties with leave to appear and to any person or organisation necessary for reasons of procedural fairness. Six, any responses to the counsel assisting submission should be sent to the office of solicitor assisting by 26 August 2022. Those responses should be concise and should not include any additional evidence. After receiving all written submissions, there will be a short hearing for oral submissions, which will be scheduled in due course on a date to be determined. They are then the directions that I make, and I will note, although this is not part of the directions, that as indicated at the outset, the intention is to prepare a commissioner's report in respect of this hearing in due course.
And that Ford can probably expect from us correspondents in relation to an update later in the year.
Yes, and that may also form part of any report that is prepared. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Can I take a moment just to say some things?
Yes, yes, please do. That was what I was about to do, but you go first.
Firstly, to the witnesses who had the courage to come forward. Secondly, to the legal representatives of those witnesses, their advice and support is crucial and acknowledged by the commission. And thirdly, to the legal representatives of the Commonwealth of Australia and of Ford. The commission has required of them responses to many questions and the production of luminous documents in preparing for this public hearing, and I acknowledge their professionalism and good humour in undertaking that task. I reserve my comments about counsel assisting and the OSA team for private setting.
Yes, thank you very much. I won't repeat what Mr Griffin has said, except to say I have no knowledge of any sense of humour on the part of anybody within the legal profession, but no doubt what Mr Griffin said is entirely correct. I want to express our appreciation to all of the witnesses who have given evidence, but particularly to Sally, Lily, Susie and Rob. They are respectively the mother of Jason, the mother of Simon and the parents of Toby. It's not easy to come to the Royal Commission and recount the experiences that they have had and that in this case, their sons have had, given the circumstances that occurred. We appreciate very much their preparedness to come to this forum and to tell of their experiences, which are of extreme importance to us, and not least because they illustrate the sorts of systemic issues that this Royal Commission has to address so that these events do not recur for people in a similar situation. I also want to particularly express our appreciation to Diane, Erin and Rachel. Each of those persons has provided invaluable information to the Royal Commission, and that information is again of great importance to the work that we have done or will do. And it also reflects very considerable courage on their part to be prepared to do so, and we express our appreciation to them. And we also express our appreciation to the other witnesses. I wish to express appreciation on behalf of the commissioners to counsel assisting, all counsel assisting for their contributions. And as Mr Griffin has said, there is a great deal of work that goes on behind the scenes, and the legal representatives of the parties participate in that. This has been a hearing that we fortunately have been able to conduct in person with people who wish to come to the hearing, being able to hear what goes on and to observe the commission in action, as it were. In order for a hearing like this to be organised, it takes an enormous amount of work. It requires great skill, organisational ability. This Royal Commission has particular demands on it, such as the provision of support to witnesses with disability or families or supporters of people with disability who give evidence, and we are very fortunate to have teams within the Royal Commission who do that work superbly. We have a number of branches within the commission and all, one way or another, contribute to these hearings. Nobody should underestimate the amount of time and the resources that go into preparing the hearing. And the hope that I express is that the evidence we have heard and that has been presented in such a systematic fashion will ultimately result in recommendations that do what our terms of reference contemplate, and that is protect people with disability from violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation. So thank you to everybody who has been involved, and thank you also to those outside the Royal Commission, such as Law and Order, who provide the IT support and to others outside the Royal Commission who assist with the preparation for and conduct of the hearing. We shall now adjourn. The next hearing of the Royal Commission, someone will tell me. No, they won't. It's public, I know it's on Education and Public Hearing 24. I'm going to take a guess, and I think it's from the 6th to the 10th of June in Canberra. Am I right? Commissioner McEwan, who knows these things, confirms that the official secretary has lifted his thumb from a distance. I am therefore confident that that is correct. So we adjourn until public hearing 24 takes place on the 6th of June in Canberra.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.